Well, good evening. Thank you for coming to the St. Lucie County School District Board Meeting, April the 11th. It's five o'clock. If you would, please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance and also remain standing as we do the Kids at Hope pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
Please be seated. We've got a special treat. The students from CAS, K5 is here, and it's under the direction of Ms. Jamie Dean, Principal Jane Whitaker, Assistant Principal Ms. Givony. Please take over, Ms. Lydia.
Rock! Let's rock! Yeah! One, two, three o'clock, four o'clock, rock! Five, six, seven o'clock, eight o'clock, rock!
Well, the stars like Buddy Polly and Evan Presley, Americans Survive and Legends Cry.
Nine, ten, eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock, rock! We're gonna rock! 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 Call my baby, Lolly Pop, tell her why, 'cause this is sweet and tender apple pie. And when she does the shake and rock and dance, then I can be guarded by her. Lolly Pop, oh, lolly, 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 lolly pop. Lolly Pop, oh, lolly, 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 lolly pop. Lolly Pop, oh, lolly, 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 lolly pop. All for the money, all for the show. Check it, get ready now, go, 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 go. Step on my station. Hey! 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 Stop it now, my baby, let me find it out in place. Only thing I wanna do, step on my lady up. Step on my lady up. You ain't nothing but a hound dog. Night of the sun. You ain't nothing but a hound dog. Night of the sun. You ain't nothing but a hound dog. Night of the sun. You ain't nothing but a hound dog. Night of the sun. You ain't nothing but a hound dog. Night of the sun. You ain't nothing but a hound dog. Night of the sun. You ain't nothing but a hound dog. Night of the sun. You ain't nothing but a hound dog. Night of the sun. You ain't nothing but a hound dog. Ain't no friend of mine. This is my life, my love, my pride. This is my life, my love, my pride. You ain't nothing but a hound dog. Ain't no friend of mine. This is my life, my love, my pride. This is my life, my love, my pride. You ain't nothing but a hound dog. Ain't no friend of mine.
Alrighty, thank you CAS. The hottest ticket in St. Lucie County was right here tonight. Thank you for starting us off. Parents, thank you so much for making a priority to have your students here. Thank you. Board members, we're just gonna give it a few minutes here to do some changing of some seats. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Since we're changing some seats out, if you want to come see some of these students perform, CAS is performing May the 11th through the 13th. They're doing Annie the Show. Annie was like on the first row, the third or fourth one in. And then I think Fort Pierce Central's got something going on. They've got Legally Blonde. That's this weekend? Any other high schools perform this weekend? Todd's Treasure Coast performed last week. Thank you for being patient. We're finding some seats up front here. There you go. Now, as soon as we do our special words of business, the Those of you that may not have a seat now, we will have a special words of business and there should be some seats available in a few minutes once we go through some parts of the agenda. If you would like to be an unscheduled speaker for a particular item on today's agenda, you must get it into the Recording Secretary, which is now the PIO, Ms. Lydia Martin. And there's also a box in the back. We've improved next to Mr. Albritton. Please raise your hand, Mr. Albritton, right there. Thank you, sir. And just put it in there before the consent agenda starts. That way, we can make necessary arrangements. Right now, Mr. Superintendent, we're gonna go ahead and turn it over to you with special words of business.
Alright, I'd ask our Chief Information Officer, Ms. Lydia Martin, to come forward and move us along in the program. Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Chairman Ingersoll, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Prince. Assistant Principals are uniquely positioned to effect meaningful change in schools, making them a critical piece of a successful school community. Working closely with Principals, these school leaders support faculty and staff who need it now more than ever amid a national mental health crisis and build a compassionate school climate that prioritizes student academic success. Their passion for their school communities shines through everything they do as leaders. Congratulations to two of our Assistant Principals, who achievements and impacts have earned them special recognition tonight. First, we have Ms. Candace Stone from Lincoln Park Academy. If you could come forward. Ms. Stone is a nominee, or was a nominee, for the Florida Assistant Principal of the Year, and I'd like to congratulate her at this time. Alright, congratulations, Ms. Stone, for being nominated for this award. And I am pleased to announce that Ms. Makita Brom, Assistant Principal at Chester A. Moore Elementary, has been named the Florida Assistant Principal of the Year by the Florida Association of School Administrators. So she is joining 26 other Assistant Principals from states across the country to receive this prestigious award, and we're so proud to have her represent the state of Florida. Congratulations, Makita. Congratulations, Makita Brom. Very deserving. And we have more incredible, great news to share. Annually, the Florida Department of Education recognizes Employees of the Year in various categories. We are proud to report that two of our four state-level nominees have been named finalists for their respective categories. I'd first like to invite Angela Patton, finalist for Assistant Principal of the Year for the state of Florida. Congratulations. It is amazing to have one state finalist, but we have two state finalists, and our very own Joanne Patton from Fairlon Elementary School, Related Employee of the Year finalist. She is a media clerk there. Please come forward, Ms. Joanne Patton. Congratulations. And we are anxiously awaiting to find out who the winners will be for those categories. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Kevin Perry, Assistant to the Superintendent, to come forward, who will share with you information about an amazing organization and their donation of instruments to our students.
Mr. Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Prince, I'm still kinda smiling because of the wonderful students that performed tonight. You know, that beautiful yellow brick building still has a warm place in my heart. But did you notice that elementary students sang in harmony, and then they also took a modulation? I'm just saying, but that's the way we expect. But the real reason I'm here. Each year, many students find their niche in a music class and some join band. They learn collaboration, discipline, and a foreign language, just to name a few. Along with joining band comes the expense of owning your own instrument. Oftentimes, students play a school-owned instrument and excel, but could be more proficient if they had their very own instrument. This is where Bluebird Educational Foundation steps in. Each year, many community members donate used instruments to the Recycling in the Key of E. program, better known as RIC. The Foundation refurbishes the instruments and then donates them to a student who's demonstrating great musicianship and dedication to the art of music. Tonight, Bluebird Educational Foundation is donating instruments valued at approximately $5,000 to the following students. We're joined tonight by Mr. Darryl Bay, President of Bluebird Educational Foundation, and some of the board members. I'll also add that Bluebird Educational Foundation will also provide a workshop for Westwood High School Jazz Band students on the 19th. And in addition to the instruments being received tonight, these students will receive two tickets to the Trumpet Summit at the Sunrise Theater on April 20th, featuring Dr. Kenneth Trimmings and Dr. Longinu Parsons. So let's start tonight with students from Alapata, the awesome teacher, Mr. Adam Roberts. Receiving the clarinet tonight is Sayana Grant. If you come forward. And the alto saxophone goes to Raleigh Ville. And I know they're a wonderful band. It's here also, Mr. Roberts, come on up, please. Receiving a bass and amp from CAS is Jose Gomez with Mr. Renellas as his teacher. Yes. And I know this next teacher is excited to come up because that teacher graduated from CAS, Fort Pierce Medical School of Arts at the time. His students are Jonathan Torres, receiving the trumpet, and Jordan Alexander, receiving the clarinet with Mr. Will Cromer as their teacher. And from Samuel Gaines Academy, their wonderful teacher, Mr. Reed. Receiving a cornet tonight is Peyton Herndon. Receiving an alto saxophone is Preston Thomas. And receiving a trumpet is Denise Fernandez from Sam Gaines Academy with Mr. Reed. And from Lincoln Park Academy, with the help of the St. Lucie Education Foundation, receiving a cello tonight is Scarlett Vaul. Her wonderful teacher is Ms. Hopkins. If we have any parents of these awesome musicians joining us, would you please stand so we can thank you for supporting music education in our district? To the board members of Bluebird Educational Foundation, as well as to our parents, our community, we work in a district that has a rich and storied history of supporting the arts. So we thank each and every one of you for supporting these wonderful students and all of the music programs here in our district. One more time for these awesome musicians.
At this time, I'd like to invite Heather Rowland, Executive Director of Exceptional Student Education and Student Services, to share with you information about Autism Acceptance Awareness Month.
Good evening. Wow, there's lots to celebrate this evening. What a wonderful performance, and to all of our students and staff, it's amazing to see. Good evening, Board Chairman Ingersoll, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. The month of April is Autism Acceptance and Awareness Month. We are pleased to have a special guest with us to recognize this month and bring awareness to the unique abilities of people with autism. Jaden McGregor is a ninth-grade student, honors student at Fort Pierce Central High School, who currently has a 4.0 grade point average. Joining Jaden to read the proclamation this evening is Mrs. Anne Marie Mizrahi, who is our St. Lucie Public Schools Program Specialist that oversees our programming for students with autism. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Mizrahi and to Jaden.
Good evenings, Chairman Ingersoll, Superintendent Dr. Prince, and School Board Members. I'm Anne Marie Mizrahi, Program Specialist for Autism Spectrum Disorders, and I just want to thank you for allowing us to highlight April as Autism Acceptance Month. I brought Jaden with me tonight. Jaden McGregor, as Ms. Rowland mentioned, is a ninth-grader at Fort Pierce Central High School. He's lived in and gone to school in St. Lucie County his entire life, along with his four older siblings. He's been a member of the Creative Writing Club, Psychology Club, and Speech and Debate Club at Fort Pierce Central High School, with a pretty challenging schedule with some honors classes, and he's been able to maintain a straight A's on his report card for the first three quarters. I asked some of his teachers to describe Jaden, and what I heard was that Jaden is funny. He's hilarious. He's got a great sense of humor. He's brilliant and sometimes misunderstood. So I want to thank Jaden for being here tonight to read the resolution.
Good evening, Chairman Ingersoll, Superintendent Dr. Prince, and School Board Members. Resolution of the School Board of St. Lucie County proclaiming the month of April 2023 as Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month. Whereas Autism Spectrum Disorder is a neurological difference that can affect anyone, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background. And whereas Autism Spectrum Disorder affects 1 in 36 children in the United States and approximately 1,075 students in St. Lucie County schools as of 2023. And whereas males are almost four times more likely to have Autism Spectrum Disorder than females. And whereas Autism Spectrum Disorder is estimated to be the fastest-growing developmental disability in the United States by the Centers for Disease Control and Autism and Developmental Disabilities Monitoring. And whereas individuals with autism are individuals first and foremost with unique strengths and abilities. And whereas symptoms and characteristics of Autism Spectrum Disorder present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in lifelong impacts of an individual's ability to learn, develop relationships, and understand verbal and nonverbal communication. And whereas early diagnosis and intervention, as well as ongoing support from family, doctors, therapists, and educators can positively impact people with Autism Spectrum Disorder to achieve better outcomes and a higher quality of life. And whereas people with Autism Spectrum Disorder should have access to appropriate services throughout their lifetime so that they may achieve their greatest potential, lead happy and productive lives, fully included within their communities. Whereas the School Board of St. Lucie County prides itself on being pupil-centered, and where our schools and community are committed to developing programs and providing services that meet the diverse academic and school needs of all of our student body, including those with autism. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of St. Lucie County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of April as Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month, and urges all personnel and students to participate in Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month activities in order to become better educated and to become better educated on the strengths and needs of those with Autism Spectrum Disorders.
At this time, I'd like to move forward with our Star Awards. We're not quite finished yet with more good news. Our first two Star recipients were nominated by John DeVino, Assistant Principal at Samuel Gaines Academy. If Ms. Leslie Godfrey and Mr. Christopher Lund from IT could come forward. And while they're making their way, the reason they were nominated, both of these individuals are always extra supportive and willing to help Samuel Gaines keep their technology functioning without missing a beat. They go above and beyond to keep in communication as well as share best practices for keeping the variety of technology tools they have on campus up and running. Their efforts have a direct impact on the school's ability to give engaging, tech-fueled instruction to students, and they are greatly appreciated. So congratulations to both Leslie and Christopher. Next, we have Derek McSween, Director of Maintenance Building Services, Services and Projects Facilities and Maintenance Department. And Derek was nominated by Principal Dr. Green at Fort Pierce Westwood Academy. Recently, Fort Pierce Westwood experienced a water main break near the entrance of the campus, causing flooding on the roadway in front of the school. Derek and his team jumped immediately into action to work with Fort Pierce Utilities to get this situation under control. Derek communicated with the principal throughout the day and provided updates as needed to keep everybody informed. He and his team helped even direct traffic so that student walkers could avoid walking in the water. They did an outstanding job, and she is very appreciative for helping them to keep the day running smoothie for students and staff. And our last, but certainly not least.
Mr. McSween, your fiancee has some family here. Don't, can they stand, please? So they came a long way to see you, Derek.
Okay, certainly not, last but not least, Bridget Hargadine was actually nominated by the Superintendent Dr. Prince. Bridget led our effort in our year-long accreditation process, and as Dr. Prince says, district accreditation is a big deal. Based on rigorous research-based standards, hold on a second. And evidence-based criteria, the process probes the whole district, from policies to learning conditions and cultural contexts, to determine how well the parts work together to meet the needs of every learner. Cognia Performance Standards are at the heart of the continuous improvement and accreditation process. They define the characteristics of a good education institute and provide guidelines for efforts that will energetically and visibly grow learners, teachers, leaders, and organizations. Accreditation isn't about passing a one-time inspection, it helps us meet and improve our commitments and to increase better outcomes for all learners. This year, the school district gained 47 more points on their district accreditation, moving from 79.64% of the possible points earned to earning 91.25% of the possible points.
It's been a great evening.
Good evening, Chairman Ingersoll, Board Members, Superintendent Prince. We were past the halfway point in the legislative session, and as promised, I have a few things to say. When I discuss political issues, I try and stay on the issues. Good policy is good policy, bad policy is bad policy. I have members who are all over the political spectrum, so I do try and stick with policy. The policies coming out of Tallahassee this year are among the worst I've ever seen for education. Public schools are under attack, school boards are under attack, books are under attack, teachers and education support professionals are under attack, public employee unions, but only some public employee unions, are under attack. Honestly, these attacks should not be a partisan issue. All Americans should be concerned when any legislative body uses its powers to strip the rights of those who dare to disagree with them and to quash dissent. One of the most American of ideals is the right to speak freely and to object to our government when we don't think it is acting in the people's best interest. But in Florida, we are seeing individuals, organizations, and companies who disagree with the elected government stripped of their constitutional right to publicly disagree. This should be as concerning to everyone as it is to the dissenters, because you might agree today, but what about tomorrow? Who and what could be next? Isn't that the lesson of history? In fact, isn't that why we should be teaching history, real history? Since I am all sure we would like to leave before midnight, I'll focus on the concerns specific to the Education Association of St. Lucy and my members. Today, one of the results of the attempt to silence dissenters on the state of public education in Florida moved through committee and is likely to become law. This law will take away one of the personal freedoms our members currently enjoy, which is the ability to choose for themselves how to spend their paycheck and how to pay their union dues. I am not wrong when I say it is a law intended to silence public education dissenters from the current policies in Tallahassee, because it does not apply to all public sector unions, only to unions in Florida that represent educators. The dissenters, our friends in law enforcement and fire departments are exempt, and by the way, do me friends. Certainly have no, no ill intent to anybody who has a union. We should all have that right. I want to be clear, my issue is that it's being taken away from us. So what will this mean to us and you, our district partners? This legislation will prevent our school district from conveniently deducting union dues from our members' paychecks, even though you will still be able to deduct other voluntary deductions like gym memberships, secondary insurance, et cetera. The intention is to make it harder for our members to remain part of their union and to make it more inconvenient for others to join the union. This is by design, even though the Florida Constitution guarantees us the right to belong to a union and to bargain for decent wages and good working conditions. The community of educators and support personnel have dissented to bad education policy and unconscionable attacks, and as punishment, our governor has concocted a scheme to punish them and keep them from exercising their constitutional right. I wish I was making this up. Over the next month, we will be taking steps to help our members enroll in our E-Dues program. Our members can expect to see union representatives in schools to assist them by answering their questions and helping them recommit to their union and choose their union once again. Teachers like the one I am modeling this afternoon will pop up throughout the district as our members recommit to their strength and collective voice. As union members, we are proud and want our colleagues who haven't had the chance to preserve their membership to know who they can turn to for help with the process or ask questions before they do. As always, thank you, and hope that our community, who has supported public education in St. Lucy, realizes that this is not just our union that is under attack, it is public education, including their elected school board and educators and support staff. However, it is ultimately our students who will pay the price for the negative feelings and discontent as we continue to lose good people and can't recruit enough to take their place.
Thank you, Mr. Friedland. CWA Report? St. Lucy Public Schools Youth Advisory Council, please. Thank you, Mrs. Daniels.
Good evening, Chairman Ingersoll, School Board Members and Superintendent Prince. I hope all is well since my last address. During the March meeting of the St. Lucy Public Schools Youth Advisory Council, all council members partook in an open floor discussion. Council members shared ideas to increase student involvement in organizations that do measurable good for students and their community, explored methods to implement positive behavioral interventions and supports, PBIS initiatives on campus, especially in our high schools, and highlighted our visions for the future of the council and how we can all contribute to making them come to fruition. The counts, the Communication Outreach Committee also officially had its first meeting last month. The committee chair, Emma Morgan, and the team are working diligently to develop our first post and promote the Youth Advisory Council Instagram account. Additionally, last but certainly not least, the council addressed business items regarding books within our school district, which we focused on for the majority of our meeting. Through unanimous vote, the St. Lucy Public Schools Youth Advisory Council supports the recommendation of the superintendent to leave the books in the public school media centers at appropriate grade levels, as restricting access to books hinders students from learning lessons that encourage inclusivity and acceptance. The council looks forward to our next meeting on Tuesday, April 18th, 2023, that did, that Mosaic Digital Academy will graciously host. We are beyond proud of our accomplishments we have made and look forward to the possibilities to come. Thank you again for your time and continuous support.
Thank you, Mrs. Daniels. Mrs. Daniels, Ms. Daniels, is any of your Advisory Council here today? Is any of your Advisory Council members here today? Why don't you have them stand up for us? Okay, well, thank you all for coming out. Thank you for making a difference in our schools and making a commitment to be on that I know some of you have signed up to address the consent agenda item. It's going to be item number 21.1. We'll hear those at the appropriate time, but right now, I want to turn it over to the Superintendent and discuss the consent agenda and take his, oh, beforehand, let me go ahead and, Board Members, you've had an opportunity to look over this, can we have a move to adopt a consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda.
I have a motion, I have a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Superintendent, let's have your recommendation.
I recommend the board. I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Board Members, you have heard the recommendation of the Superintendent. I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. Seeing any discussion? None? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Mr. Superintendent, can I have your report?
Okay, just, some of it is going to be a rehash of what we've already seen. These are the speaker forms, just an FYI.
I will get them ready.
So anyway, I just wanted to recognize, having two state finalists in one district for, for awards is very significant. We have a Support Person of the Year, Joanne Payden from Fair Lawn, and Angela Patton, an Assistant Principal from Mariposa. I can't say enough what that says about the professionalism. And also, the effort that, that our employees have for our kids. It was great to see all the students today from CAST perform for you, because the bottom line, that's what we're here about, is we can disagree sometimes about topics, but we don't have to be disagreeable, because ultimately, it's about the kids. And I can tell you, speaking on, just on my behalf and on behalf of the Board as well, is we all what, want what is what in the best interests of children. I want to cup, bring up a couple of recognitions with regards to State Science Fair. We had that on April 4th through the 6th in Lakeland. We had some award winners, and I just wanted to recognize those award winners, because as I've had two of my four children in our St. Lucy Public Schools, I know the Science Fair is a big deal. And we had some winners at the state level. The National Youth Science Camp Award recipient and fourth place Chemistry Category Award from Treasure Coast High was Dominique Thomas. Evelyn Laster Placco and Emily Torger, the Collier County Regional Science and Engineering Fair Special Award. Hunter Byrd, Manatee Regional STEM Competition Special Award, Southport Middle School. Mecky Sappleton, Osceola Regional Science and Engineering Affair Special Award, Treasure Coast High School. Ramses and Tunes Rivers, United States Navy Office of Naval Research Science Award for Southern Oaks Middle School. Camilla Salcedo Lind, Recognition Award in Biomedical and Health Sciences at Westgate. Aiden Hong, Honorable Mention Award in Plant Sciences from Palm Point K8. And Camilla Nevas Rivera, Second Place Award in Engineering, Okamic. And honestly, either those were chosen for their merits or the Hard Names Award, because they, that was a, that was a mouthful on a couple of those. Also, the Career Connect Conference Mid-Florida, sponsored the career source, which is Career Connect, and basically it sets up our high school students for jobs in, in workforce development. I attended that, and it was great, because 300 students from our six comprehensive high schools participated, and this is a great opportunity. We have so many technical education programs for our students. If they're not going to go into a career that needs college, then we try to make sure that students, whenever they graduate high school, they're workforce-ready to, to immediately enter an industry where they can use their skills they learned in high schools. And this was a program that is sponsored in part by the EDC, our Economic Development Council, we work through them. Businesses come in and literally provide opportunities for our students to get jobs as soon as they graduate high school. Also, lastly, Sam Gaines Academy got a Lighthouse School Award by the Franklin Covey Education Corporation as a leader-in-me lighthouse school. This is very rare. March 24th, the school's been certified and named as a leader-in-me lighthouse school by Franklin Covey Education. This recognition is evident that the school has produced outstanding results in school and student outcomes by implementing the leader-in-me process with fidelity and excellence. All I can say is this, it is such a small number of schools across the world that get that recognition, and that was a great opportunity that Sam Gaines Academy seized and were recipient of that award, because that is really one of our, our success stories in St. Lucy County with the success that that school has had. Lastly, we're not going to have another board meeting prior to the start of our end-of-the-year assessments. That's the high-stakes testing everybody starts talking about. That's going to really start at the end of this month. It's going to be a little different, because we don't have to wait months and months to get results. We'll get those results back pretty quickly. And I know that it was mentioned in our Star Awards, but I wanted to recognize again, Bridget Hargadine. Bridget, raise your hand back there. The accreditation process is a very cumbersome process, and Bridget helped coordinate so many meetings. All of our schools participate in that. All of our schools participate in that. It's a very thorough review of what the quality of education is in St. Lucie County, and I'd like to say once again that St. Lucie County Public Schools is a destination district, and it's all because of the adults in our schools trying to make sure that school is the best part of every child's day, and we're committed to providing that in St. Lucie County. And that concludes my remarks for now. Mr. Ingersoll.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Ms. Shattuck, do you have a report?
Thank you, Chairman Ingersoll, members of the board, Superintendent No Attorney's report tonight.
Okay. We're moving to School Board members' report, and we're going to discuss Consent Agenda Item Number 21.1. And we've been dealing with this for a while, and I'm going to ask Mr. Superintendent to give us a quick summary of how we got to this point.
All right, thank you. And as a superintendent, I feel it's my obligation to kind of explain to the public, like, where we are in this process, because this has been going on for a little while now, and it's something, you know, many of the public knows about and some of the public doesn't know about. But I wanted to kind of provide a brief summary before the board has discussion and acts on this item. So during the 2021 school year, we had a single individual submitted a request for consideration, or reconsideration, forms on, and these are what are called book challenges on titles between December 2021 and January 2022. Prior to that, and I asked my senior executive staff, but not, none of my leadership team could recall a book challenge in recent memory. I mean, this is really between December and 2021 to January 2022. The citizen's request was for all challenged titles to be permanently removed from all of our school libraries, regardless of age or grade level considerations. On her form, she indicated that the contents violated Florida statutes 847.001, which is a statute dealing with pornography, and 847.002, which is material harmful to minors. The challenges also expressed concerns regarding CRT, or Critical Race Theory, and LGBTQ content, and how those specific topics create confusion and psychological damage to young minds. My predecessor, Superintendent E. Wayne Gent, waived the requirement that any book challenge start at the school level and move the challenge to the next phase, which was a district review. St. Lucie Public Schools followed our board policy for this review, starting with the establishment of multiple district-level review committees, which included citizens, content experts and teachers, union representatives, district advisory council members, principals, media specialists, and either Dr. Helen Wild, the chief academic officer at the time, or myself, the deputy superintendent at the time, numbering a total of 34 people. The committees had established the following guidelines. First, committee members had to read the entire book and not just pull excerpts out of context, so that the book is judged as a whole work. Next, each committee reviewed policies, statutes, reviews, and awards, and targeted age groups of each book. Also, each committee followed the same protocol, and the results were written in a standardized manner for the superintendent and board. Each committee recommendation includes the rationale for each decision. Any dissenting opinions of committee members to the majority were noted. So if anybody disagreed with anything that happened in the committee, that was also part of the record as well. Each book was reviewed to determine if it violated the specific criteria for pornography and harm to minors outlined in Florida statutes 847.012 and 847.001. If it was determined not to be in violation of statute, other complaints were discussed, along with the appropriate age group the book was written for, and the overall value and merits of the work. So here is a summary of the results of the committee work that we're here to talk about tonight. Committees recommended, and Superintendent agreed, Superintendent Gent agreed to the following: One title was removed from our shelves, 19 minutes. Ten titles would remain at current levels and restricted to those levels in the future. Six titles would be restricted to specific grade ranges and will be removed from lower grade ranges. Therefore, tonight, there are 16 titles left for consideration as part of this appeal by the community member of the superintendent's decision. In conclusion, as the current superintendent, I believe these books, titles, have been appropriately vetted based on a community member's challenge. Most importantly, most importantly, regardless of any decision on books tonight, every parent, every parent whose child attends one of our public schools has the ability to restrict any book title for their individual child. In fact, I commend the board's actions in August of 2022, approving a policy for empowering parents and ensuring each parent has a say in the library content their child has access to. That's important, because what one parent restricts for his or her child might not be appropriate for someone else's child. Every parent parents differently, and my way is no better than your way and vice versa. Any titles we discuss today can be restricted, once again, by any parent for their child. Any parents can access that form right on our website. As stated earlier in following our process, committees were formed that included various stakeholders to read and review each title and ensure SLPS complied with state law. As a believer in our process and being a member of one of these committees, I understand the time, effort, conversation, and care that went into vetting each and every book and ensuring our recommendations took into consideration all the diverging beliefs, cultures, and characteristics that make St. Lucie County Public Schools a destination district and an ideal location to raise a family. It's why I chose to move my family here eight years ago, and why I believe in this recommendation tonight. Every decision I make as superintendent is informed by my background, not only as an educator, but first, as a parent and father, a husband to a public school teacher and a father to four children, with one being a recent SLPS graduate, and the other, a 14-year-old daughter who is currently enrolled in one of our public schools and would have access to some of these books I'm recommending tonight. As such, I stand behind my predecessor, Mr. Gent's recommendation, encourage the board to reject the appeal and accept the recommendations of the committees and the superintendent, all 16 titles. Thank you, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We do have quite a few speakers. I am going to start off with our scheduled speaker. In some, you're going to ask, what's the difference? The scheduled speaker, everyone has the right to put their name to be our scheduled speaker seven days in advance of our board meeting, which allows them to talk before the school board, on TV, and also gives them five minutes. And that's the difference between one speaker tonight and the rest of everybody else. So, Mrs. Dale Galliano, you'll be the first speaker. Please state your name and which city you reside, and you have five minutes, and Ms. Shattuck will be the timekeeper. Before you do speak, and just in case, I'm just going to ask everyone to listen intently, politely, hold all comments and applauses, and most importantly, please address the school board and not the audience. And I know you won't have a problem. I just want to say it before it does happen. So, thank you, Mrs. Galliano, and being here tonight. Please state your name and address, or city.
Thank you. I'm Dale Galliano, St. Lucie County. It's kind of interesting, because this is two years we've been doing this, and a lot of reading, as we've all done, a lot of different things that I've had to go back into my way of thinking and getting different information as far as child development and all that redoing and relearning. I have been in this, and I have had death threats. I have had people accost me in the whole situation for what I'm doing. I have been told that I'm uneducated, illiterate. I've been called every name in the book that, in the books of, where there's 13 of them in two books, that would be an R-rated situation. And I've been accused of things that I've literally not had anything to do with. My whole thing here has been a mission, a mission that I was asked for from the Lord, and he put me forward to this. I've spoken to all of you, or at any given time I've met with you, and you've agreed with my premise as far as these books are concerned, as far as the kids are concerned. I'm not banning books, I'm not burning books. I've turned into some sort of a ogre in all of this for a number of people. It's been kind of a trying two years for me, but with great results as far as within my own heart, as far as things have gone. My main thing was always to make sure that the kids came first. The kids that may not have the privilege of mentors, may not have the privilege of good teachers that can spot things, maybe it's a, the family dynamic is really quite not what we would love for them to have. We have 37, over 37,000 kids in this county that are going to school. I'm quite sure some are horribly overlooked, not by anybody's fault, but just because of the dynamic that we're in at this day and age. Their parents, they were all raised with PTA, and when I say that these things are going on in school, they have the, oh, no, it can't be that bad. I give them books, they read it, and they say, oh, no, no, it's not here in St. Lucie County. But it is. They're trying to feed their families. They've got parents that have two jobs, eats, they're just trying to get through, get the paycheck, put it, food on the table, get them, their homework done, and be able to get them in bed in a decent hour, so that maybe they can breathe. But then it has to have, they have the opportunity to go into their computers and phones and have to figure out which books are yes, or which books are no, and all the different things that are available. We've putting a lot of stuff on these parents, over and above everything else that they're trying to deal with that they didn't have to deal with, which is all the media stuff, all the social media things, all the things that are going on. It's hard. It's hard for them. Do I want them out of the schools and put in public libraries? Definitely. Then the parents can actually go with their power bill, get a nice free card at the power, at the, at the public library, and say, yes, I want my child to read this. I want my child to read this. They have the right and the dynamic of their family of which they want to be able to educate their children. It's not some strange teacher, it's not some strangers within the school board, or the people that somehow behind me seem to disrespect me in the past two years, which is all rather amusing to me, but it's kind of sad that we have to have a packet in order to be able to devote ourselves in order what's good for the kids. All I want is for the kids to be able to have the best that they can. They can have anything in reading, writing, arithmetic, science, history, fiction that is made out of the minds of other people. I don't see the necessity for it to be. The people that they're saying that they have, all the compromised kids should be able to have it, but they may not have the family in order to do it. Family to keep them set, keep them straight. If there's a tragedy because of the books, and we don't know if it would be, it may be, it may not be. We have kill lists in our high schools. Is it the books? I don't know. But if it is, it's on you. God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Galliano. We have 23 unscheduled speakers to address this item. I'm going to ask three people to come up, in the order of which I've been giving these in, and just stand right next to Ms. Lydia Martin. It's going to be Jerry Belcher. Ms. Felicia Bruce. Ms. Gail Coste. Please come on up. All right, Jerry will go first. Please state your name and the city in which you reside. You have three minutes.
Welcome, board. My name is Jerry Beekler. I live at 1719 Southwest Port St. Lucie Boulevard. A recent CBS News poll found that the huge majority of Americans think books that discuss race depict slavery, criticize U.S. history, or represent political ideas they disagree with should not be banned, not be banned. Over 80%, yes, that's 80% of the people polled, said those books should be taught in our schools. This board should not allow non-parents to usurp the school's authority by taking books from thousands of students and forcing expensive vetting and court battles, potentially court battles. This book banning is all about restricting freedom of ideas that certain individuals in the minority disagree with. This is dangerous for democracy. It is also an assault on First Amendment guarantees supporting free speech and expression. We can ban books, we can ban drag, but unfortunately, we're still putting kids in body bags. If we really care about our kids, you know, I mean, last year, more kid, children died from guns than any other cause. If our Republican leaders in Tallahassee were actually concerned about the safety and welfare of our children, they would be banning military assault weapons, instituting, you know, universal background checks, and yet, over 80% of gun owners, this is gun owners, support background checks on all sales of firearms. Yet we get, what we get here in Florida is free to carry, and if you're a woman, you're forced to carry. Our governor has banned the College Board from testing a pilot of the Advanced Placement African American Studies curriculum in Florida, claiming the program lacks educational value. Last year, at this very time, DeSantis vetoed a bipartisan redrawing of congressional districts. He redrew the districts to eliminate two majority-black districts, and Republicans passed it. These acts of the governor are really institutional racism. We should never let... We should never let racism, xenophobia, and conspiracy craziness rule us or lead us. Thank you.
Ms. Bruce, please state your name and the city you reside.
Felicia Bruce, Fort Pierce, and I want to thank the school board for this forum. I particularly want to thank Dr. Prince for explaining the process. It sounds very thorough, very fair, and appropriate for our community. I want you to know that I've lived a long time, and over the years, or decades, as they may be, there's a few things that I've learned. I learned that democracies and free counties or free states don't ban books, they don't censure speech, and they don't censure protest. They don't discriminate against fragile children. No one gets smarter by reading less. Teachers don't groom. They teach kids to be anything that they want to be. They try to groom them, so to speak, to be decent, caring, responsible citizens. I spent 25 years in public education. I saw hundreds of teachers who cared more, who did more, who helped more kids than their meager paychecks reflect. Now I work with retirees across the state. This morning, I was in Highlands County all day, and I met with retired educators there, who, like my colleagues in St. Lucie County, volunteer hundreds of hours to continue helping teachers by mentoring, students by reading, and do lots of wonderful things in their communities. There, I saw a high school group sing, and tonight, I got the privilege of seeing elementary school kids. Why? Because public schools unite us. Teachers serve our children. Teachers and the books that they need, that they read to their children, often paid for from their own meager paychecks, are chosen to include all children, and they use the four to six years or more of training, education, and preparation, and experience that they have in choosing those books. This situation has not been brought to us by an internal problem, it's been inflicted on us by the state, who wants untrained, unprepared, inexperienced people to dictate to the 40,000, to the parents of 40,000 children in St. Lucie County. If ever there was a case of the tail wagging the dog, of the world being topsy-turvy, this is it. My message is let teachers teach, trust professionals who are trained educators to choose age-appropriate materials for their classrooms, let the children read. choose age-appropriate materials for their classrooms, let the children read. That's the path to a lifelong love of learning, and that's the path to sustain our democracy.
Thank you, Mrs. Bruce. Ms. Cost?
Hello. Thank you all for letting us do this today. Uh, my name is Gail Cost. I live in Port St. Lucie, Florida. Today is, April is not just Autism Month, it is also the, one of the anniversaries of Kristallnacht, and Kristallnacht, um, was when the Nazis marched in across Eastern Europe, and they start, first thing they started to do was burn books. And sadly, I don't have children of my own, but I am here representing six million of my people who did. And it is very difficult for me to hear that books, such as The Diary of Anne Frank, that they banned in Vero Beach, things of that nature, were banned, and it makes me very sad to the bottom of my heart. Hate and bigotry, racism, needs to be exposed and rooted out at an early age. It is a lesson that children should learn, because that's what schools are about, to teach lessons and learn from them, so that these atrocities and these racism and bigotries are not repeated. Thank you so very much. Bye-bye.
Mrs. Davidson, do you want to speak on the books, or do you want to speak later? Mrs. Davidson? Did she leave? Okay, she'll now speak at the, at the unscheduled part. Okay, our next three speakers are going to be Ms. Kayla Washington, Nicolette, Ms. Nicolette Owens, and Ms. Susan Sedonia, Sedonia. So if we could just get all three of you up there, ready to go. Alright, Mrs. Washington, please state your name and the city you reside in, please.
Hello and good evening. My name is Kayla Washington, and I'm a resident of Port St. Lucie. I'm a student at Treasure Coast High School, and I have come independently and unaffiliated once again to show my support for the superintendent's recommendation to not remove any books from our library at this point in time. Last meeting, I came unscheduled to speak about the unjust persecution of books being advocated for by some members of the community, and today, I have come to show my appreciation for the school board's decision. While previously, I gave a personal anecdote advocating for the integrity of these books and attempted to add nuance of the student perspective to the discussion, I recognize that decisions cannot be made on feelings alone. I've recognized, based on, based on emotions alone, and thank the board for looking at all the facts when this pivotal decision was made, and beseech them to continue to look at these facts when the decision continues to be expanded upon today. Of the sixteen books specifically being discussed today, five are written by people of color, two are written by authors of Jewish origins, six are about the struggles of children who face discrimination, one is written by a queer author, four simply acknowledge the existence of queer people without fixation, and one details the struggle of being queer. The aim of these books is to provide solidarity for those who fit into these discriminated categories. The targeting of books primarily written by marginalized authors gives the impression upon young children that these identities are inherently wrong and worthy of ostracization and shun. It gives the impression that their voices are not worthy of being heard, thus supporting oppressive institutions such as racism, xenophobia, and homophobia. For students, this means a decreased inability of sympathy and empathy to worldviews they cannot understand, as well as major psychological deficits. Instead of this, your ruling has allowed for the continued support and uplift of marginalized identities, and has allowed students, present and future, the ability to find themselves in the material they read, as all children deserve to do, as I deserve to do. As I stated last meeting, I understand the importance of children reading materials appropriate for their age and experience. However, for upper grade levels, specifically high schoolers who are readying themselves for adulthood, it is imperative that we have access to books on real world, real world experiences we may soon face or may already be facing. It is imperative that I am able to educate myself on the prejudice and the racism that I am currently facing in your school systems today, and that I'll face in your workforce when I leave it.
Thirty seconds remain.
So I would once again like to reaffirm my support and gratitude for the superintendent's decision, and my gratefulness to this board for always having the best entrance of students at heart, as I, nor you, can express the importance of being young and educated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mrs. Owens, you're next. Please state your name and the city you reside.
Nicolette Owens, Fort Pierce, Florida. Good evening, all. I am a St. Lucie County teacher, and I believe that it's important for me to speak on these forums because I'm the one in the classroom. I teach in the secondary setting of a high school, and my classes are between twenty-eight to thirty-two strong each period. I need to say to you that first, as a teacher who's been teaching quite a few years, and a teacher that teaches African-American history, not AP, I have taught it, but I'm not teaching AP this year, um, it's important for the children to learn about their history. Children learn best when they see themselves in the book. So if they can see themselves, they can have dreams. When you take those books away, you kill their dreams, you kill their heart, you kill their mind. And as a teacher, I cannot help you do that. It is my job to follow the law, and I will do that. But I need you to understand something. My children see me as smart, strong. They say I'm young, I don't understand, but I'll keep it going, alright? But the thing is, they need to believe that about themselves, that they are strong, that they are intelligent, that they can make it. And life is important. A book can give them those feelings when they see a politician, when they see a board member, when they see somebody working that they know. It's important. My kids read the news, I give them credit when they come in and talk about current events. They love that. Now they're interested in it. Ms. Owens, did you see the news? Did you see that? They, I get them asking questions. It's important. My African-American class is looking up desegregation education court cases right now, and they are getting up and they are teaching about these cases. You should see the ownership these kids have. They realize education is important, that we fought hard to get here together. Education will give you everything. My last thing I want to say to you, I am a parent, my children are grown now, but I have three young little boy grandsons. And I want to say this, there is absolutely nothing wrong with a parent deciding a certain book is not right for their child. But there is a colossal problem with a parent deciding that therefore, no child should be allowed to read that book. Let them read.
Thank you, Mrs. Owens. Ms. Sedonia?
Okay, my name's Susan Sedino. I live in Port St. Lucie. I'm over thirty-year resident of Port St. Lucie, and I am totally amazed at the way this conversation and the speaking has turned against what we tried to do. We have never, ever said we wanted to ban one book. We've never said that this was about race, or LGBTQ, or racism, or politics. The only thing that we said this was about was that children, young children with impressionable minds shouldn't be reading smut, the kind of stuff that we got up here to read to you, you, the board members who, who closed our microphones, because you didn't want your grandchildren that were home listening to the topics and the, and the verbiage in these books, has nothing to do with anything about blacks, or color, or race, or, or religion. It was just about why these books showing kids eight, nine years old how to have sex, sex with other people, sex with the same sex, sex with animals. This is what we tried to say. We have, we have never, ever said any, that's what's in those books.
Alright, excuse me.
We have never said anything about
Let's hold our comments to ourselves, please.
What I'm saying is that that was our reason for being here, and now we're being persecuted because of something that we tried to do from, from what's, what we believe is a morality and a, and a, and an issue with God. But what I've come to, of, to see with everything is, this is not some battle that we can fight. This is a spiritual battle now, at this point. And we, however you decide, we've done our best, the rest is up to God, and that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next three is going to be Dicky Brooks, Rob Ruber Messer, and Ann Johnson. Brooke Messer and Johnson. Mrs. Brooks?
I'm Dicky Brooks.
Okay.
I'm Jane Brooks, but I go by Dicky, so, and it's too late now to change that.
City you reside in, Ms. Brooks?
I'm sorry, what?
The city you reside in, please.
I, I, it's right here on this piece of paper, I'm going to say that. Good evening. My name is Dicky Brooks. I'm a resident of Fort Pierce. I was born here, educated in Florida public schools, graduated from Dan McCarty High School, received two degrees in psychology from FAU. I spent my working life out of state, but when my husband and I retired sixteen years ago, we came back to Fort Pierce. We've lived there since. Our grandson has grown up through St. Lucie County schools, and he's currently enrolled at Lincoln Park Academy. On his behalf, as well as behalf of all our students, I am here tonight to urge this board to retain the sixteen books in question in our public schools at the levels recommended. I know you share a deep commitment to the well-being and academic and social success of every single one of our students. Speaking from my educational background and my experience as a mother and a grandmother, I believe the system for evaluation of books that you all have created is sound and effective. I have read the committee's reports on each book, including two books I have read myself even before all this started, and I found the committee's reports to be carefully reasoned and thorough. For that, I thank y'all. I urge the board in the strongest terms to affirm the recommendations of the request for reconsideration committee and the superintendent for all titles, and reject all appeals to the contrary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mr. Messer?
I'm Roger Messer from Port St. Lucie. I want, first of all, want to echo what Ms. Brooks had to say. I think you all did a fine job, and I appreciate Dr. Prince for, for explaining what you did. But I am concerned that one individual should be able to dictate to my grandchildren, have grandchildren in the system here. My children graduated from, uh, one of them graduated from Westwood High School, he's my law partner now. My daughter graduated from Lincoln Park, and she's a businesswoman over in Tampa. And the school system did well for them without banning any books, and they bring home books, and I could see what they were reading, and that's how it works. But you know, I'm concerned about some of the subjects that were being questioned. I have, have a brother who's sixty-three years old who is gay, and I saw him growing up with discrimination. And I see, I have a friend, a couple of friends who are teachers here, one of them told me that a child came up to him and said, Mr. X, I think I might be gay, can we talk about it? And he wasn't allowed to talk about it, because someone in Tallahassee said, you can't discuss this with a child. I have concerns that someone who is the descendant of a racist person can stand up and prevent the children in this state from learning about Rosewood, from learning about Okoé, from learning about all of the lynchings that we've had in the state. It's, you know, I don't care that, that whose people are stepping on. They should learn that. Hopefully, we don't repeat that history. But I think you all are doing a good job, and I, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Johnson?
Hi, my name is Ann Johnson. I live in Port St. Lucie. Um, I'm here as a parent, although my children are grown, but as a grandparent, a retired nurse practitioner and nurse educator, I'm here to say that I am against arbitrary book bans in public schools, and like Felicia Bruce, I believe our teachers and librarians are educated, and they are best equipped to decide what books are appropriate for students of different ages and, and, and grades. As you have mentioned earlier, public, parents already have the right to restrict their children from certain titles and genres. This, I, I feel that a parent has the right to look at the different books, decipher themselves whether or not their children should be reading those books. But whether or not a book is appropriate is, is totally subject, subjective. So if one parent may feel one book is inappropriate for their child, maybe a thousand parents feel that it is appropriate for their children. When my children grew up, they loved Chronicles of Narnia and other fictional works that were pretty popular at the time. By them reading different kinds of books, and I believe it made them more curious readers and creative writers. When books are banned, I feel students, they won't be able to understand different cultures, worldviews, religions, lifestyles, and what constitutes a family that may look very different from their family. But for diversity and inclusion, we have to make sure our children understand that these are all acceptable lifestyles as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Our next three speakers are going to be Chrissy Thanos, Krista Story, and Taylor Daniel. Thanos, what's that? I'm sorry. Ms. Thanos? Okay, I just want, I mis-said it the first time. I apologize. Please state your name and the city you reside in.
Good evening. My name is Chrissy Thanos, and I live in Port St. Lucie, Magnolia Lakes. I stand before you today to address pressing issues that is affecting our educational system, the war on woke, the banning of books, and the neglect of black history. These issues are not separate but interconnected, and they all have a devastating impact on our students, teachers, and our society as a whole. First, let's talk about the war on woke. This term has been used to describe the attempts to silence discussions, important social issues such as racism, sexism, and homophobia. It is incredibly harmful to our education system as it creates a toxic environment for our students and teachers. It also deprives our students of essential education, one that includes a thorough understanding of the complexities of the, of our world. Secondly, we must address the banning of books, which is a direct consequence of the war on woke. It is the attempt to silence and suppress marginalized voices, and it is unacceptable. Our students deserve an access to a wide range of literature that explores different perspectives, experiences, and ideas. Banning books robs our students of the opportunity to learn, grow, and develop critical thinking skills. Lastly, we cannot overlook the importance of black history. It is an essential part of our country's history, and it is our duty to ensure that it is accurately and thoroughly taught in our schools. The neglect of black history not only does a disservice to our students, but also contributes to a severe teacher shortage. Teachers who are passionate about teaching black history but do not have the necessary resources and support are less likely to enter the educational field. We cannot go back to the nineteen fifties where segregation and racism were the norm. We must move forward and embrace diversity and inclusion in our schools. Our students need to be taught about different perspectives and experiences, and they have the need to, and have the need to be taught to be, to think. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Thanos. Mrs. Story?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'm Krista Story, and I'm here in my capacity as president of the Democratic Women's Club of St. Lucie County. We have approximately 90 members. Many of them are in the audience. First of all, we want to thank you and your staff for your willingness to serve our community in these very, very challenging times for public education. We recognize that, and we thank you. The membership of the Democratic Women's Club includes current and former teachers. Many of them serve here, and they have served elsewhere. It also includes parents and grandparents of current students. And I am the parent of three children who graduated from St. Lucie County Schools many years ago. Our members also are volunteers in any organizations which support children and their families. We pay attention and we care. We are stakeholders in this community. As a backdrop to the matter before you, the Democratic Women's Club is a very strong supporter of public education and of the right of locally elected officials to make decisions for their community. Home rule. Accordingly, we support the superintendent's recommendations based upon the thorough analysis of each book by your professional staff and the School Materials Review Committee, a thoughtful deliberative process based on applicable statutory criteria, not innuendos. We urge you, the school board, to follow that recommendation. Article 9, Section 1 of the Florida Constitution provides that "Education of children is a fundamental value of the people of the state of Florida." I'm quoting, "It is therefore a paramount duty of the state to make adequate provision for the education of all children residing within its borders." In keeping with that directive, we urge you to have continued diligence to protect the important role that books play in the education of our children. Yes, books should be age-appropriate, but no, books should not be removed from shelves merely because the books include references to varied social, familial, racial, gender, ethnic, cultural, or religious experience of groups.
30 seconds.
In closing, I'd like to highlight one of your policies that's been referenced: the fact that parents should be the ultimate determiners of these decisions. The decision as to what books should be available to approximately 42,000 St. Lucie County students should not be made by one individual, but by parents. Thank you for your time.
Mrs. Story, Mrs. Story, Mrs. Story, real quick, could you, could you tell us where you reside, real quick?
Oh, I'm sorry, in Fort Pierce.
That's okay. I know, but I need to make sure for the record. Mrs. Daniels, name and place of residence.
Good evening. Once again, my name is Tyler Daniel, and I am a resident of Port St. Lucie. As a student in the St. Lucie Public Schools school system, I deem it appropriate to provide a youth perspective. Restricting access to books has been justified as a means of censoring reading materials to protect students too young to handle descriptions of violence, sexual content, and LGBTQ+ themes, amongst others, within literature. I concur that there is an extent to which specific topics are inappropriate for children. Nevertheless, restricting total access to diverse voices and vital historical information to preserve innocence is unacceptable. This is especially true when an overwhelming number of proposed books to be challenged do not contain egregious content and happen to be written by marginalized authors. I've had the opportunity to read books noted on the recommendation list. Amongst these are The Hate U Give by Angie Thomas, which reflects upon systemic racism that ultimately perpetuates discrimination, and Drama by Reina Teligamir, a graphic novel focused on a coming-of-age narrative that explores friendship, teamwork, inclusion, and determination through the protagonists and the relationships she creates. As someone who has experienced what it feels like to be labeled as an other by my peers and even been called a slave by a classmate, I find books that tell stories of oppression, persecution, and racism, tackle topics related to gender and sexuality, and highlight past injustices essential to sharing lessons, perspectives, and realities that may be unknown to others. When these topics are inaccessible, students are prevented from exploring identity, learning about history, and discovering community. Limiting book access merely based on political controversy fosters ignorance and isolation. So I am here, speaking strongly in support of the superintendent's recommendation. I thank the superintendent for presenting a recommendation that reflects the St. Lucie County Public School District's focus on placing success, well-being, and equity in our schools and amongst our students. As a board, please consider your vote's effect on our students' pedagogy, intellectual freedom, and the professional autonomy of school librarians and teachers. Thank you for your time, and I am joined today by students and others who wish to stand in support of my statements and the superintendent's recommendations.
Thank you, Mrs. Daniels. Our next three speakers is going to be Janie Gibson, Lita Jarmarkit, I apologize, and Laura Vanyong. Okay, thank you. Mrs. Gibson, please state your name for the record and place of residency.
It's Ms. Gibson. I'm Janice. I live in Port St. Lucie. Considering the amount of time that kids spend on screens and playing video games, I'm actually kind of surprised that anyone would object to children reading books at all. I really support what the board is doing and the fact that, you know, if you object to a book for your kids, that's fine, but I don't want to be told what I could read or my kids can read. Those who object to teens being exposed to ideas of language, I can't help but wonder if they know it's on their own children's phones or computers. How do they treat their, on social media, are they kind to their classmates? Are they bullies? I think we need to know what's going on in our own homes before you start deciding what other people should be doing in theirs. What, and let's not even talk about the sexually explicit things that many kids have on their telephones. I wonder, in the houses, how many hours of violent games are played? Does your house have access to streaming or cable? If you object to violent language or foul language, then you better not have them. Books for many kids are a refuge, a safe place. Perhaps they will meet characters that share their feelings and fears and feel reassured. They learn that they are not the only one. I have facilitated support groups in the past and have often been amazed at how many people thought they were the only one that felt that way and felt so good to know somebody else shared a fear or an emotion or thought that they have. Many teens today feel isolated. We know that mental illness is a big concern. Children need to be exposed to ideas and thoughts and know that the thoughts and ideas they have are safe. We need to be doing everything we can to support our children. I was a kid who felt different because I'm an independent thinker. In my day, back in the 60s, where we were very ignorant of what was going on a lot of the world, Nancy Drew was my hero. People need to find their communities, their support, their peers. Many children find their friends and acceptance in books. If you don't want your kids to read certain books, fine, but please do not deny other children the right to find their safe place in the world or their parents to help to guide them.
30 seconds remain.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. All right, how do you say your last name? I'm dying to know.
Yarmarkt.
What was that?
Yarmarkt.
Oh, yep, yep. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Leela Yarmarkt. However, I go by the name Fioris. I am a St. Lucie County resident. I am 16 years old, and I am a Treasure Coast High School student. Last meeting, I came in support of my peer, Kayla Washington, as I was too afraid to speak. Now I am no longer scared to share my voice. I make up part of the queer student population at Treasure Coast High. Now today, I have come in support of the superintendent's decision. I know in support of the superintendent's decision, as we've seen, that some may bring up their experiences of finding community within these books. Although I do not have a connection to any of these books mentioned, I would still like to advocate for their importance from the aspect of providing a form of education. Due to my queer identity, I have been followed, harassed, and bullied, which have put a considerable strain on my mental and emotional health. Despite having support systems and safe spaces, I am still forced to live in a state of fear, and I have now accepted these as unfortunate circumstances of my life, as they are something that I will never be able to escape. Due to this, it pains me when I see the appeal to the superintendent's decision. Although this appeal is stated as a necessity in order to protect the youth, I couldn't help but notice that these books contain topics that were deeply rooted in race and queer identity. I understand wanting to protect children from vulgar displays. However, the restriction of some of these books does not protect innocence, but rather harbors ignorance. The harassment and persecution that I have faced has already occurred with the resources that provide exposure to diversity available, and it terrifies me what will happen if the opportunity to acknowledge and learn about minorities is removed. Last meeting, it was stated in opposition to the superintendent's decision that the county's children must be saved as we must all appear before Christ to be judged. Regardless of religious or political belief, we are still children deserving of protection and community now. This is especially important, as not all students receive this at home. It is crucial to our society that we continue to advocate for representation and exposure to diversity. If followed, the appeal will not reduce the interactions between these marginalized communities and the rest of the world, but rather increase the risk and difficulty of these interactions. Following the superintendent's decision will provide a safe environment for every student to learn about the diverse backgrounds that they will encounter in the future. This will not only create a safer society for marginalized communities to exist in, but also aid all students on the path of becoming a well-rounded member of society. Thank you for your time, and thank you, Superintendent, for your recommendation.
Thank you, Mrs. Yarmarkt.
Hello. All right. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm here today as a representative of dear Asian youth St. Lucie and Marn Chapter, a branch of a global nonprofit which promotes intersectional activism for diversity and representation. Today, I would like to speak on the general limitation of this election of books, ones which spark important conversations about issues our generations use face. As a proud Vietnamese American, I know that representation is crucial in highlighting communities and their stories. Growing up, I felt invisible and isolated because of lack of representation in my culture and heritage in media and popular culture. This is a pain that is shared throughout all marginalized communities in America. Reviewing the books on the superintendent's recommendation list, issues such as bullying, police brutality, racism, victim blaming, and a lack in cultural diversity are the common themes seen. All of these would stimulate necessary conversation to ignore, to avoid ignorance and intolerance. Even if a book does not align with your personal beliefs, it is vital that they are exposed to this one day in their lives. It is knowledge about a world and a reality that we all live in. As a Vietnamese American and a member of dear Asian youth, and as a concerned student in the pursuit of knowledge, I urge that all of us celebrate and promote diversity. Not uplift voices that are often pushed down rather than continue oppression. Silencing one group's voice will ultimately lead to the silencing of another. It is understandable where your intentions may come from, either for a concern of your children's safety or personal beliefs, but ultimately, it will only lead to restrictions of one's identity. It's going to be a domino effect, where we cannot see a line where your past justifications were based on. We have to ask, where do we draw a line? Where should we draw a line? And for this, I urge you to listen to the voices of the youth who are going to be reading these books. And in the end, there's no greater danger than limiting your future's education. Ultimately, it will be limiting their minds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. The next three is going to be Ava Borgella, Brianna Thomas, and Richard Lawton. Ava Borgella, Brianna Thomas, and Richard Lawton. Ms. Borgella?
Yes.
Please state your name and residency, please.
My name is Ava Borgella, and I live in Port St. Lucie, Florida. Today, I would like to speak on the potential restriction of the book The Hate U Give. As a Black girl who attended predominantly white schools up until the ninth grade, the book The Hate U Give made me feel seen in a way I've never felt before. The main character in the book, Star, is shown trying to find her place in a school where she often feels like an outsider. She feels that she's different than the white peers and has to navigate the expectations and assumptions of her white peers while also trying to navigate internal conflicts. For me, picking up this book in the fifth grade was the first step to accepting myself for who I am, and reading this book was a revelation. It felt like finally seeing someone articulate the same struggles I have been dealing with for years. I could relate to Star's frustration, having to constantly code-switch or adjust her behavior to fit in the environment. I understood the pain of feeling like my experiences were not understood and my perspectives were undervalued or overdramaticized by my peers when I tried to point out microaggressions. The Hate U Give also gave me hope. It showed me that there are ways to push back against the systems of oppression that try to keep me down. It reminded me that our voices and our stories have power, and by sharing them, we can create change. So today, I am standing here using my voice in hope to create change. With this considered, to deny other kids of this resource would be to restrict their livelihood and self-actualization. Kofi Annan would say that education is the premise of progress in every society. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Thomas?
Good evening. My name is Brianna Thomas. I am a resident of Port St. Lucie and attend Fort Pierce Central. I want to begin with thanking Dr. Prince for looking this over and taking the time on making restrictions that what you deem appropriate among the mass of students. Your decisions and restrictions are an agreeable compromise, and I genuinely appreciate you taking the initiative us students deserve. These books have created an outlet to be seen, felt, and heard, since pop culture refuses to see teens, us, and me. As a biracial young woman living in a world built to tear me down, every day I fight to be seen. Books create a safe environment where I'm capable of feeling someone else in my shoes. Specifically, in my case, this book was The Hate U Give by Angie Thomas, a book on your list. As a child who has been torn between the racial line of white versus black, this book has shown me that there is not one side versus the other. The message of this book is the hate we give finds a way back to us. It taught me that I am not torn in the racial conflict and misunderstanding of society, but I am the project of a future connection. I found myself in a pizza of literature when I could not see a reflection of myself in my surroundings. This was not just a mirror for me, it was a window to a world where I felt safe, a world that I wanted to create. It did not teach me hate. It did not teach me police violence or to hate the cops. It did not teach me violence. It taught me that words make a difference. The main character took on protesting the matter as her friends resulted to riots. It taught me to stay true to myself in the face of adversity. It taught me to stand up here tonight and use my words instead of my anger and disgust. As a child trying to fit in with society, this book was the gateway into me finding myself. Hate is not put out with hate, it is with love. I stand before you today vulnerable and open, but with a passion. My older brother in high school fought with suicidal thoughts. As a man now, we continue to have the conversation of 13 reasons why. Maybe he wouldn't have had certain hospital visits or scars if he had known about this book. I've had conversations with fellow peers about how they are now able to cope with their suicidal thoughts because of this. I would rather give my friends the access to a book than a flower on their coffin at their funeral. The access to these books have helped me find myself and save many of my friends in dark times. I am so thankful that you guys did not let misunderstanding and fear, no matter how well-intentioned, deprive students of the opportunity to see themselves in books. I am here tonight in support of the superintendent for his recommendation. I extend my gratitude to the board for giving me the opportunity to use my voice and share my thoughts here tonight. And there are students in the crowd here tonight-
30 seconds remain.
-who stand in support with my statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Mr. Lawton, please state your name and residency, please.
Richard Lawton, Port St. Lucie. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your service to our community. I'm here to address the demands by Moms for Liberty to ban books from our schools. These attacks on our schools must stop. These attacks are not about protecting children, they are about ending public schools and replacing them with for-profit charter schools. The books that are being proposed to be banned are, in many cases, written by well-known authors, Nobel laureates, and Pulitzer Prize winners. They tell stories that ignite the imagination, allow children to experience the outside world, and give children an opportunity to learn about themselves. None of the books being proposed to be banned were found to violate any laws or the governor's new morality laws. The demands by Moms Against Liberty to ban books are nothing more than attacks on students, teachers, school boards, and our own democracy. Democracy is a choice. We can choose to embrace democracy and the rule of law, or we can choose to ban books, teach children to hate their classmates, teach parents to hate teachers, and hate each other because we disagree. other because we disagree. Ours is a world of choices. We can choose the country we want to be, the people that we want to be. We can choose which freedoms we want to keep and which we want to end. But we need to be careful. We can choose democracy, or we can choose whatever comes after democracy. And as an ad lib, I would like to tell the Moms for Liberty that if this country does not suit you-
Sir, sir, please address the board.
If this country does not suit you, then please immigrate to a country which is more to your liking. I can suggest Syria, Hungary, Russia, or China. They will all embrace your ideas for banning books.
Before I call the next three speakers, Mrs. Thomas, did you put two in just to make sure?
No.
What was that? It was?
No.
No, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't two of you guys in here. All righty, the last two speakers is Amani-
Alman.
Alman, thank you. And Yasmin Alman Hassan, thank you. Please state your name and your residency, please.
Hello, my name is Amani Mode and I live in Port St. Lucie, Florida, and I am a current high school student at Fort Pierce Central High School. Hello, good evening. My name is Amani and I thank you all for your time and open ears. Growing up as a Muslim-American, I never truly felt understood or recognized by others around me. I'd always be recognized as the odd one out of the groups for the beliefs I followed. Understandably, I accepted being seen in this light because in most scenarios, I was only Muslim in my class or even sometimes in my whole school. So I just give my classmates the benefit of the doubt, seeing they're just unfamiliar with Islam. Yet, there comes a point where my acceptance of others' words would lead to harassment and bullying from my inalienable right. From name-calling to other things said would just get worse. For example, what do you have in your bag? Boom, and much more. There are representations of me or my religion which promotes nothing but peace. So as a young girl, I would always wonder why is it okay to make fun of Islam yet when other more common religions would be represented, there wouldn't be a finger pointed nor a mean comment said to those students. As I got older, I realized a lack of respect for others and their beliefs can evolve from misrepresentation and no education surrounding that particular topic. So as time progresses, we see more and more books showing diversity of others and their beliefs, which can help one understand and respect others around them that share different core beliefs than they do. So when I heard about various books such as The Library in Abstra and the Syrian Secret School being restricted, even though these books are not currently on the removal of access to books in our district, this showed me how even just one of these books being restricted can take away a student's form of representation. If my representation was taken away, little me would be heartbroken at a step closer to being finally recognized and understood and not being an outlier taken off its tracks. Because all I ever wanted was to be portrayed in a book for who I am, like other students had the opportunity to be characterized around me, to be seen, to be respected, and to be heard, without the loudness and heaviness of others' words, because evidently, it is understood that by having books that are diverse through school libraries, we create a more unified and accepting Commonwealth for future students throughout our community. As I, a high school student who has a passion in learning about others, religions, race, and more, why can we not give other students the opportunity to pursue their interests and dreams further in the forms of books and literature? So today, I hope my words can compel you to support Superintendent Dr. Prince and his recommendation on books through our school libraries, no matter if it covers religion, race, history, or many more topics on the list. Because I and my fellow Muslim brothers and sisters are more than a list of stereotypes and do this for all the misunderstood students like me-
Thirty seconds remain.
...who just dream for others to understand them and hope to reciprocate those same feelings towards them as well. Again, I thank the board and Dr. Prince for your time and consideration, and there are students and others here today who stand in support of my statements. Thank you.
Please state your-
Good evening. My name is Yasmina Alami Hassan and I'm a current resident in Port St. Lucie. I'm also a current student in Fort Pierce Central High School. I am here to speak on my behalf about the book restriction. Life as a Muslim-American student in a public school has never been easy and has never been the norm. Throughout my elementary and middle school experiences, I was always seen as the odd one out. My name was different from other students, the food I brought to school was different, and the cultural and religious beliefs were different, and much more. I always tried to fit in with the normal kids at my school at such an early age. It took me a few years to understand that the jokes, name-calling, and exclusions were not just silly little remarks. In the eyes of many, these small jokes were ignored and has never been classified as bullying, but the power it held upon me was greater than anyone could ever think. I never felt as if I were equal to my peers from the exclusion I faced at such an early age, even though we are all equal humans. With the current lack of books being presented in school libraries in which give representation to other religions and cultures already, I would like to thank the superintendent's recommendation for preserving these books. It gives the students opportunities to be educated and to those students with different religious beliefs, a chance to be understood and accepted because we have the right to own our own religious beliefs without being limited. So I hope and dream that my experiences and words can give you a glimpse of my world and the impact books play on my life and my fellow students in our district. I thank the superintendent once again for the recommendation to preserve the access to these books. Thank you for your time and consideration. There are students and others in here in support of my statements.
I'd like to thank everyone that got up to speak and share their thoughts and for everyone sitting back and listening and accepting. Mr. Superintendent, can I have your recommendation?
I recommend the board reject the appeal and accept the recommendations in the committee and the superintendent on all book titles, numbers one through sixteen, on item twenty-one of the board agenda tonight.
Board members, there are book titles number one through sixteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. So I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I think that this is something, after we have heard everything that has been said, I think that we should have some discussion. No board?
Go ahead, Mrs. Richardson.
Well, I mean, what are your thoughts? The thoughts are going to be our discussions or, I mean, sorry, it's just, our thoughts are going to be reflected in our vote? Is that how we're going to do this? Or are we going to have some discussions about what we just heard?
I've had the opportunity to discuss it at two workshops and I think I've made-
We've had discussions at two workshops? I didn't think we did.
Well, the last workshop, I said how I felt. And if another board members don't want to discuss, we're ready to vote on these items.
I'll give you a perspective real quick. I just, as I've mentioned before, life is about interpretation, right, Dr. Wild? And how you interpret things goes through your success in life. I have copious amounts of interpretations and opinions, and they all by far support what we're doing right now. And I, much smarter people than me, and I want to thank the committee, Dr. Wild and the whole committee, and a lot of respect for them. And I got to tell you the truth, Mr. Chairman, I've got to go by people who talk to me. I never got one email, one call, in any way, shape, or form, or have anybody talk to me in opposition to what we're doing right now. So that's all I can say to you. It's just interpretation. Overwhelmingly, the committee voted this, you know, got, felt this way about it, so I didn't plan to say that, but-
Any other discussion?
The only thing that I want to say, or I will say, is that I was under the definite impression that this was not a ban. Is it a ban, Mr. Superintendent? Are we banning the books?
No, ma'am, we're not banning the books. If you look in the packet that it's given us, the books are remaining in the school but at certain grade levels. Some were removed from K to eight to high school only, and no books have been banned except for maybe, was it one? We're only voting on the sixteen here, and that's what's up for question. And no books are being banned.
Okay, I mean, I just want to make sure that we understand that this is not a book banning.
No, ma'am, it's not a book banning.
The whole idea behind this is that we are deciding as a board whether or not the books are going to remain in the school system.
In their appropriate settings, yes, ma'am.
In the appropriate setting, so it's not a ban.
With an opportunity for parents to be able to let their children not check the book out or not. There's mechanisms that the school district put in place that we voted on in August that would allow parents to have rights of their children's education in that regard.
The only issue that I have with that is some parents don't, like, before this, if my daughter brought home a book that is, let's say, this one summer, and she's brought me your, whatever, how would I know as a parent that this is on that list if I wasn't paying attention to this forum? How would I know? Can somebody answer that?
There's not, go ahead, Mr. Superintendent.
The state's going to be publishing a list that can be accessed through the Department of Education of all books that have been challenged with the districts, and parents can be directed to that via our website whenever it's published. It has not yet been published. But once again, to go back to the question of, parents do have a mechanism. If they do a little bit of research, they can find the books that have been challenged with each district. And the bottom line is, my recommendation is to deny the appeal. All the committees have met. We have, we don't violate any statute according to the committee findings. Some of the books were moved to different age groups that were more appropriate, and that's the recommendation, the superintendent.
I understand what the recommendation is. I was just, I'm asking questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So how would a parent know? Well, yes, so we're going to have this list and it's going to be on the website. Some parents don't have access to computers. I mean, everybody has a phone, granted, you know, so that would be, but there are some parents that just don't know. They don't know. So how would they, because if my daughter, my son, brought home this one summer or any of these, how would I, how would I know that unless I read it? I wouldn't know the contents of the book and that maybe I don't want them, that this is probably not something that I would want them to read, regardless of the age.
Yes, ma'am.
The thing is, if I can't read it with them, I don't know, like you mentioned at the last board meeting about the F-bombs, that it's probably, if it was in a movie, it would have been an R-rated movie, you know? So how do we, how can these other parents who are not a member of the SAC or the PTA or 110% involved in their children? Because there was one, one of our members here that said that the parents, they come home, they have time to feed, da-da-da-da-da. It was Mrs. Galliano that said all of these things that they have to do by the time they get one of those moments, you know, they are just tired. So how do, they are not up and up on all of this. How do we protect those kids? How do we protect those kids?
Mrs. Richardson, we're doing our best, but when I used to work with students and I would go to the movies, I would always Google it and read, you know, I used Dr. Dobson's website. And it's the same thing with books. If you're an in-tune parent, there's opportunities for you to do that.
Yes, we are talking about the in-tune parents, but my question, my thinking is the ones that are, and I'm-
I understand what you're saying, but I would also go back to the point, too, that some of these books that are on this list, I would probably say four or five of them were only checked out three times in the last five years.
Yes, because we didn't know about them, but know that they are brought to our attention.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mrs. Richardson, all due respect, you have a good question there? Very good question. Thing is, that's a whole other, that's another workshop. We could workshop that.
No, because we are voting right now, so it's not for another workshop.
It's not part of the question before the word right now. And again, all due, that's a good question, but we can't be all things to all people and do every single thing and do every minute little thing that has to do with this. If you want to workshop that and talk about how we can make more information available to parents about the books, we can do that at a workshop. That's not what our agenda is right now.
Okay, our agenda-
I respect what you're saying, and it's a good question, but that's not what we're talking about. We're not going to solve that right now.
And I also think the superintendent did answer it. Eventually, the governor is going to put out a list for parents to be able to go and look to see the books that have been challenged. So the homework has been done for some parents already. And I know they're going to the internet, but I mean, the internet's almost the key for everything. It's, you know, you go out to eat, everyone looks at the internet.
Okay, so the books are not being banned, we are just removing the books from the shelves. And so, they, I think-
Did she say removing books from shelves?
That one of the things that, that is under consideration, it's not necessarily CRT, the LBGQTC or any of those things, it's just the verbiage that's in these books. And we're talking about the verbiage. Now, I remember one board meeting when we had to, you asked us, or asked them to stop reading, you asked them to stop reading because it was so intense, it was so graphic. It was very graphic and it's not something that we wanted to be recorded, if I'm correct. So I'm saying, if we can't read it here, if we can't read those words, and I went back again and I looked at them again today, then-
Yes, ma'am, it's age-appropriate.
It's age-appropriate. Okay, anything I say, there's an answer for it. I'm just saying that sometimes it might be age-appropriate as far as, if it was age-appropriate, then they could have continued to read when they started to read, that we wouldn't have asked them to stop reading. That's just one of the things that I'm thinking about right now. Go ahead. Dr. Miss, you have something to say?
Yes. As I listened to the conversation and the book that was being read at that particular board meeting, we had, there is one or two books that have been taken completely off the shelves already. Okay, the superintendent actually took one book and banned it, using that word banned it, he banned it. So I've gone over each of these books, and what I have found with the majority of these books is that there are life lessons that are being taught in these books, and very, very serious life lessons, as I heard different ones get up today. And thank you, young people, for coming and letting your voice be heard. Very important that your voices are heard. And so, but as I look at the list of books and I've read these books, I found one or two that was a little bit, for me, a little bit of something that I might personally would not want my children to read, not because of the subject matter, but because of the language that was used. And so, but when you look at sixteen, sixteen books, that was just one or two of them. So we have a committee, this is my stance, we have a committee that have made, have done their research, have made their recommendations, the superintendent has made his recommendations. I think that we have to be very careful about the hypocriticalness that lies within, even with these books. You know, somebody got up and mentioned about, and I saw even somebody held up their sign, you know, ban guns, not books.
Yeah, I saw that.
And I don't like the hypocriticalness and the politicalness that lies beneath all of this and the ugliness that really lies beneath. And I know there are some people that sincerely, you know, I believe these ladies that have come and have mentioned these books, I believe that they're sincere in what they have read or what they have brought- in, in what they are see, what they're, what they have read or what they have brought before us. But when I look at these books and my interpretation of what I'm, I've read, some of the, some of this stuff is ridiculous, you know? And Tango Makes Three, and Everywhere Babies, and, you know, The Truth About Alice. I mean, these, these books, they talk about serious subjects that our young people must face. This one about suicide, 13 Reasons Why. I just went to a funeral this Saturday for a 17-year-old right here in St. Lucie County who they say committed suicide. Our kids need to be able to read and associate and be able to open up their, their understanding. And, you know, there's one where I heard a young lady talk about how she was bullied. There's one here that talks about how something was put out on a young lady, and the young lady got seriously bullied because of it. You know, and then it's, it's just, we, our kids need to know social skills. And I believe a lot of these books teach that, as well as give them the encouragement of being who they want to be in life. And so everybody has an opportunity to be what they want to be, and no one is overseeing that and saying, you can't be this, you can't be that, you can't do this, you can't do that. This thing that's just come out where DeSantis has put out that guns, no background checks are necessary for guns. We just had a, a shooting. Young people's lives were taken. You know, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm through with politics as usual. And so, you know, as I see it, I see that these books are needful, and, and they need to be in our district and not pulled off the shelves.
Okay, board members, we have a motion on the table. Ms. Holly, do you want a further discussion?
I really would like to take this opportunity to thank all of our community members that have come and spoken and been part of this process. All that served on the various committees to share their thoughts, but really adhere to the agenda, to the outline, and to do it truthfully and to take it in total context of what our kids could learn from these books. That was a tremendous commitment of their time, putting themselves out there, not easy subject matter. So I, I want everyone that was on those committees to hear our sincere thoughts for serving in that capacity. I also think it's important that everyone realize that when it gets to this process, to this point in the process, our policy states that the board members will read these books, and that's part of why it's taken so long to get to this point. We had to read these 16 books, so we know what's in them. And of course, there may be items that are, but I'm a firm believer in the parent being able to have the discussion with the child about those books. I had many of those discussions with my own children over the years. So I, I just wanted to, for you all to know that in addition to taking the recommendations and reading the recommendations of all those that served on the committees, that the board members took this extremely seriously and spent a lot of time going through them, each individual book, and making our own notes to get to this point. I, I, the greatest memory I have of childhood was going every Saturday, my grandmother would pick me up and take me to the library. I was exposed to such a wonder of, of words and everything that helped shape me into who I am today. To think that a child would be deprived of that, to be deprived of the access, really breaks my heart. So I'm, I'm, as you can tell, completely supportive of the recommendation that the superintendent has brought forth, because it supports our students, it supports the parents' roles in their lives, and it supports our communities. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Holly. Mr. Kelly?
Could you, I'm asking the call question, please.
All right, we're going to go ahead and call the question. The recommendation is to accept the superintendent's recommendation. We've had discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those oppose?
One oppose.
Form one. Board member's school report. Mrs. Richardson, please.
I'm sorry, oh.
Board members' report.
Okay. I have my report. So I didn't realize when we did the superintendent's agenda that you had asked for notice for discussions or pulling an item. So there, I have some questions on the item for 8.3 and 8.4, which I am going to ask.
Yes ma'am. They've already been approved, and he can answer them through email?
Yes, because I need answers. I didn't. I spoke with the attorney, and I didn't realize when you did that, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So 8.3, we had a $69 million... Bond, I believe, and one for $180 million. So I wanted to know, what, what is that $69 million?
Oh, that, are you talking about the next meeting? We have, that's our next meeting.
No, what is it for?
That's, that's our next meeting. We have another meeting tonight.
Yes, but we had to approve it, right?
We already approved, yeah.
We approved it, so what was the, I would have pulled it for discussion. What is it for?
It was, it was our certificates of, we call them COPS. It's our certificate of participation. It's, it's debt reduce, and then the 180 is for the building, loans for the building.
And what is the $69 million for?
That's the money that we saved from the COPS.
And, and the $180 million is the money that we saved as well?
No ma'am, that's the money that we're, we're loaning. That's for the two buildings, Triple D and Westwood.
Mr. Chair, I went, if you don't mind, I can explain. I went over this pretty extensively. That's the money for the two high schools that we're building. And, and for me, it's pretty easy because it's a Mr. Gent, correct, Mr. Gent. John, you can tell I haven't eaten yet tonight. John, that, for me, the whole thing is, it's a $4 million savings, and I commend everybody that went over it. It's a $4 million savings over what we would have done. It's, it's a good thing. But we are going to have another meeting on it, right?
Yep, right next, right after this meeting.
For the two high schools.
But that didn't answer what the $69 million was for. Certificate of Participation?
Yes, it's debt, it's, it's, it's debt, debt...
May I speak?
Go ahead.
Sorry. So the $69 million, Mrs. Richardson, an oversimplification of this is we have a bond agency that recommends borrowing. It's basically our debt service, and we, it's almost like you have a home mortgage, and you're refinancing it at a low, at a lower interest rate. So we're actually saving money by refinancing it. That's the $69 million.
So by refinancing $180 million?
No ma'am, no, we're refinancing $69 million of debt service at a lower interest rate.
Okay, and the...
And the 180 million is for the, basically, we're taking out a mortgage, we're taking out a loan for the two high schools. One is the Triple D High School, and the other is the Fort Pierce-Westwood High School rebuild. So we're financing $180 million.
Instead of $160 million?
No, so to your point, I'll go ahead and answer that question. So in December, hang on, I'm just locating my information on this. So give me one moment. So, because I think there's a little bit of confusion. Do you want to close out the meeting?
Yeah, I just want to, right, right now, this is supposed to be board members' report. And I'm sorry you got confused.
It's my report.
But, but we already voted on it, number one. And number two, I've got another meeting that votes on the same exact thing under the Leasing Corporation. So that's our next meeting.
Okay, so our last two workshops were memorable, to say the least. My takeaway from March 28th workshop was the presentation by Dr. Perry on HBCU and HSI. I learned what that HSI acronym meant. I didn't know before, but I learned. He showed a video of students, and they talked about their intended career path and the scholarships they were awarded by various colleges. And I have to say that each child, or each student, actually, young person that spoke and said what they wanted to be, what their future career was, they actually looked like their career. They looked like they would fit into that career, which to me was totally amazing. I learned that the PM 1 was administered with students having no knowledge of the subject matter. PM 2 with students having 50% of the subject, knowledge of the subject matter. And that PM 3 is where the rubber is going to meet the road. So when it comes to PM 3, I just wanted to know when we were going to get those, that results, how soon we would have that result.
The superintendent will, will email those out along with the results. They should be coming out within a month of, I think he said in May, but...
I wasn't asking necessarily the chairman, I was just making a comment.
Okay, good, good.
Okay.
As soon as, as soon as those come out, I'm sure he'll email them out to us.
Yeah. Okay, I learned that next school year that the, the district would be focusing on math rather than reading. And I also learned that each school is going to, or has a typing program, which is necessary because our, our tests are going to be online. So as, as far as each school having a typing program, I think that is amazing. I went and visited Dan McCarty's gym, and I have to say that I am very, very pleased with what I saw at Dan McCarty. The windows are in, there's no more trees growing out of the, the roof. There is no more morass or, or mold. The gym is looking really, 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 really nice. So I wanted to thank our maintenance department, our facilities department for a job well done. I, I was just, just, just pleased as punch. I wanted to find out also, and this is a question, if the superintendent knows when was the, oh, he's not even here. Okay, if knows when was the last time the curtains were replaced in the gym and the, and the cafeteria. If you go and you look, board members, and maybe you want to visit Dan McCarty and look and feel the curtains, you'll see that it's made of velour, but if, when you rub your hands against it, the velour is coming off of your, on your hands. So you'll see that, I don't know when was the last time, but I do know that these things have a lifespan. And I, you know, so if anybody knows when was the last time that that was changed or when it was replaced, and if it has passed its lifespan, you know, if you could please give me a hard copy answer on my desk, I would appreciate that. Because, board, I think that that's something maybe that we could look at in terms of, you know, I'm one of those like HGTV people that we, if we could just get these things done, let it look, you know, caring. Caring, is that, caring? Secure and caring learning environment for children. So the next five-year plan, I don't know when that is coming up for the, the board's vote. I would like to know when that is coming up because, you know, to see if any of these things that I'm talking about, if they are on the five-year plan. Also equitable distribution, that component. I noticed that we had some, two contracts that were, or three contracts. And I just wanted to find out if that equitable distribution was put back into the verbiage for those contracts that were awarded today. And I'm just going to leave it like that. There are other things here, but I'm just going to, those are my major questions for today. So if I could get answers to those, I would appreciate it.
Yes ma'am, just put in an email and the superintendent will respond.
I, I'm, this is my, I'm, I'm asking the questions now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just remember, it's, all goes directly to the superintendent and not to staff.
I'm speaking to the superintendent, he was not here.
Yes ma'am.
Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I just, no report, I just want to mention best pledge of allegiance since I've been on this board. I don't know whether it's cast or whatever, but the enthusiasm for the pledge, I felt that one, so I like that pledge. I have no report, thank you. Good job tonight.
Thank you, sir.
No report at this time, Mr. Ehrnberger. Have several things to share from my visits in Tallahassee, but I think I'll save them for our May meeting when it's kind of culminated by then.
It's been a good day. I appreciate everyone that came today, particularly cast and starting us off right. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for all your work and staff. Of course, you guys have done a phenomenal job as usual. Thank you, security, for everything you guys have done, moving the, moving the crowd in and out. Brian and your team has done a phenomenal job tonight. Dr. Mills, do you have any report?
No report.
Yes ma'am. Okay. I would like to close the meeting out, but we do have two unscheduled speakers. So I'm not sure if they still want to speak. Is Ms. David, is Ms. Davidson here? I think she left, but I just want to make sure. You saw her leave, I'm good? Ms. Bintney, does she want to speak? I will turn this over to the superintendent, and he will look over these matters at hand. Thank you, sir. Let's go ahead and close this meeting, then we'll open up the next meeting.
Can we take, Mr. Chair, can we take like two minutes in between the meetings?
Meeting closed, we'll take two minutes in between.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we're going to open up the Leasing Corporation, April 11th, 2023. It's now 7:31. Got a couple items to discuss. Mr. Superintendent?
Okay, so there's two items in this meeting, and I know that, you know, I'm recommending the board authorize both resolutions, but I just kind of want to walk through the board real quickly, real quickly about what the resolutions are. And Mrs. Richardson brought this up at the last meeting, and I want to make sure you understand what, you know, we're voting for. The $69 million, once again, is basically, it's a refinance on debt service. You know, it's, whenever we have our bond counsel recommend that we can get a lower interest rate to save the district money, we try to take advantage of that, and we're refinancing $69 million of our debt service. That's the first resolution. The second resolution is the certificates of participation. And in a nutshell, that's a, basically taking out a mortgage for $180 million. That is representative of the two high schools, the Triple D High School, and then also the Fort Pierce-Westwood rebuild. Now, I'd orient you, I gave you all this. This is literally a slide from a presentation that was done December 2021 that shows the total budget of each high school was $89 million, okay? So $89 million for the Triple D, $89 million, and then an anticipated budget of $48 million for a future K-8. Now, what we're coming to the board with is basically borrowing $180 million. I just want to be clear, because Mrs. Richardson keeps bringing up the GMP. The GMP is different than the budget. So the GMP for the, for the Triple D, for example, is $81 million. However, the budget includes other things, which is the architectural and engineering services and reimbursable expenses, testing, which includes materials testing, threshold inspection, soil borings and permitting fees, pre-construction, which includes pre-construction services such as estimating and scheduling, FFNE, which includes furniture fixtures and equipment, contingency, and that's used for unforeseen conditions and scope modifications, and finally, your GMP. So all of these things added together are approximately $89 million for both the Triple D school and also the Westwood... for both the Triple D school and also the Westwood rebuild. As a result, we're going to basically get a mortgage for $180 million. So we can move forward. So that's, that's, those are the two resolutions. And I make a recommendation, the resolutions are accepted as presented. Thank you.
And, and Mr. Chairman, to answer, because I didn't get a nod from you, I think you said yes. But when we brought this up before, I, I asked you, this is a savings of $4 million over what we would have had if we stayed what we had.
With the, with the $69 million, is that what you're saying?
Four million.
With the refi, how much are we saving, four million?
For the refinance, yes, we're saving $4 million. I thought, I just want to make sure that you're talking to the first, the first item, the first resolution, not the second.
Things, that's all I look at is the bottom line, so, good job.
Okay, we have the recommendation of the superintendent. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing done, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion closes, meeting over.